Okay, 7:30, it's time to get started. This is a wonderful crowd. I want to thank all of you who take this interest in this. It shows a couple things. It shows the interest in the topic, but I think it also is a good testament to how well we got the word out here. Uh, this was probably as good an effort of getting the word out, um, as anything we've done. I'm Bob Frye, I'm your mayor. I would like, uh, hey, word for our city council people here tonight to stand for me. Ed Hughes-Scott, Dick Daley, Susan Saffell, my editor Tim, and John Thomas. To give you a little idea of the format, we've got three of these planned. Uh, this tonight, uh, Thursday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and Thursday at 6 o'clock in the evening. Both of those will be here also. Um, we're gonna go, I'm gonna give Michael some time to kind of give us a little orientation. And then we're gonna go for about an hour. And, um, if anybody wants to talk, should be able to talk. I would like for you to keep your comments to three minutes while we'll be our timer. I told this story in council meeting, for those of you that have been to council meeting, please bear with me. But for the rest of you that are in here, uh, I am ruthless on keeping to that three-minute policy. And basically, the reason is, I went to a dentist for about 25 years. And this guy had a bedside manner report behind. He was the most terrible person now, but I kept going to him. And after a while, I kept thinking, why do I keep going to this guy? And the reason was, he was the one professional that respected my time as much as I did. And that's why I'm a true G P. I want to respect your time as much as I respect mine. So we'll end it out, and we'll be ruthless about three minutes. The reasons we're doing this, um, this council, we walked the blocks during the campaign. Certainly for me, we actually mentioned it also. The topic that came up more than any other topic was parking. And a lot of times, there wasn't anything more than just that word, parking. So when we all sat down to set our goals for this council term, we made it as one of our goals to revisit the issue parking. This issue has been gone over over and over and over for more state councils than probably I've had here. But, uh, we do think that, uh, it needs to be revisited. We always respect feedback from citizens of this community. We've got some very smart people in this community that always come up with good ideas, some that we don't ever think of. So that's what we're here for tonight. We're here to listen. We're not gonna get into debates. We're not gonna answer a lot of questions. We're gonna devote a bit of time to hearing what you people have to say. We'll give Michael a little time to, um, orient us, and then we will launch right in. And, uh, if you would, cut to the microphone. Give me your name and your address, just like in council meetings. And give your cause. I'll be writing some of this stuff down. You can't read this, but this is from my field here. We are gonna have Thelma, our city secretary, putting in, putting, uh, the questions or comments you make. Not the questions, comments here, where you can read them up on the board. So don't pay a lot of attention to the little here and there, that's what my business is. That's what I'm gonna go through immediately. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, mayor. Before we get started, quickly, I'd like to introduce the staff that is here this evening. Our director of public works and assistant city manager, Chris Piper. Rick Stale, our traffic engineer with Traffic Engineers Incorporated. Fire chief, Steve Rawls. Assistant fire chief and fire marshal, Aaron. And, uh, Ken Walker, our police chief. And we've got IT here with Stephen Garrett of Carlin, our IT director, and Chris in IT as well. Thank you, thank you all. I will just step through a brief presentation to kind of set some of the things we heard from residents thus far, and help everyone understand, uh, some of the comments we've heard and what some of the situations and photos look like that we've experienced in the, in the, uh, in the city. Purpose of the meeting, what we, what we're doing is receiving resident comments and concerns, collecting technical parking-related questions to address with our traffic engineer and staff, and compiling resident suggestions. What we're not doing tonight is recommending solutions or engaging in debate. We really want to hear from the residents. We want to take notes. We are recording this so that we can make sure we have a record that we can, we can go back and reference. The town hall meeting agenda, we could have our welcoming comments by Mayor Frye. Give this presentation. We'll listen to the public. And there are also comment cards. Uh, if you, if you choose not to speak and you want to fill out a card, you can do that. Or of course, you can always go to our email, streetparking.westutx.com, or, uh, excuse me, and enter those comments. This is a citywide street width map that we had created so that we could understand what the various streets in the city look like. It's probably just about impossible to make out on the screen. We do have some hard copies, and we will have this on our website so that you can pull it up and actually zoom in and see a street that you're interested in, and see exactly what that street width is. This is from face of curb to face of curb, street widths. The one thing you'll notice is that it's very unique. In a city of two square miles, we have 17 different street widths. Typically, in most every city you'll visit in the country, the standard is a 28-foot back of curb to back of curb, which means 27 feet face to face. So that is your general standard street that you see driving around town, residential streets. We have, because of trees and because of the timing of construction and everything else that went on with the rebuilding of our roads, uh, there were decisions that had to be made. And obviously, we ended up with quite a few various, various types of streets here. Just to give you an indication of what widths of vehicles look like. Here's a standard sedan, a half-ton pickup, an ambulance like ours, a fire pumper, and a garbage truck. And obviously, there are school buses and other types of vehicles that would mirror these types of widths. But this gives you an indication of what certain vehicle widths look like.
We can't see those, can you tell us what they are?
Sure. Uh, the sedan is 5'11" body width. The half-ton pickup is 6'4" body width. An ambulance is 8 foot wide. A fire pumper is 8 and a half, 8, 8'5" wide. And a garbage truck is 8'6" wide. And then obviously, the mirrors on each of those add a little more on each side of those vehicles. These are some photos that were taken just to give you a pictorial of what certain width roadways look like when our ambulances, our fire trucks and garbage trucks try to get by them. This is a 24-foot wide roadway in the 3400 block of Georgetown. You'll see the width is 8'8" of the mirrored mirror on that ambulance, and then the vehicles on each side of this legally parked truck and a car. Here's a fire truck, same, same hundred block, in our solid waste. It gets pretty tight on, on the 24-foot road. In the 5900 block of Rutgers, it's a 20, 26-foot wide roadway. And you'll see, there's 11'5" between vehicles here. Uh, both cars are legally parked, and we have the 8'6" approximate body width of the solid waste truck. Here's a 30-foot wide roadway. It's pretty roomy on those wider roads, you can tell right away. Here's a 29-foot wide roadway. We've just tried to summarize some of the suggestions from residents, pulling those together. We haven't listed every, every single comment, but trying to summarize the main ones that we've read and heard from residents. The first one is do nothing. Believe there is not a problem. Another is to prohibit street parking throughout the city. Another would be to prohibit overnight street parking only. Another, require parking permits for street parking. Another is to require resident parking in garages and driveways. Another is to review parking on a street-by-street basis and make decisions based on problems as they come up. Another is to allow parking on one side of the street only, possibly rotating sides by day or month, et cetera. Further summarizing, uh, many believe that blocking sidewalks with parked cars is unsafe and against the state law and against the American With Disabilities Act, the ADA. Many believe current parking regulations are not enforced to the level they would like to see, including parking over sidewalks. And there's also specified clearances that fire apparatus needs for passage of, on the roadways. Others do not want police over-concentrating on parked cars instead of crime. And many believe speeding and cut-through traffic will increase if parking is restricted. Just the main areas of the laws that affect parking on streets. Texas Transportation Code, Section 545.302 is what outlines parking laws in the state of Texas. West U, one caveat in West U, we do currently allow cars to block the sidewalk crossing driveways if the car cannot physically fit between the garage door and the sidewalk. And then we have the International Fire Code, which most cities subscribe to, including us, which requires that a fire apparatus shall have an unobstructed width of not less than 20 feet on streets, and an unobstructed vertical clearance of not less than 13'6" under the limbs along our roads. Now, we'd like to hear comments, concerns, and suggestions from the residents. And when that's complete, uh, what we will be doing next is council will review and discuss resident comments along with related input from staff and the city's traffic engineer. And then council will determine what action, if any, should be taken. I will step back over to the other table. We'll be trying to type the general comments as they come in, keeping a summary of what's being said. Again, we are recording by video and audios because we do not want to miss anything. Uh, we encourage you to raise, raise a hand or we have comment. People signed up?
They signed in, but not signed up to speak.
So we're gonna do this by raising hands, you think, mayor?
I think it would be to sign up or have the first shot at it.
But it wasn't a sign-up to speak, they just signed in.
Okay. How you guys wanna do it?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay, we'll do it by raising hands. And again, we'll have a three-minute time. And if we need to walk to you with a mic, just let me know. Otherwise, if you can come to the podium and speak with a microphone, that would be great.
Can you tell us what the range of street widths? We could read that back here. It said the standard was 27, but we had 17 widths.
There are a couple of, uh, unique areas in front of the elementary school with the escalades. Those are only 12-foot wide, but that's, that's just very unique. We're in the 21, 20-foot, I think is the narrowest between curves, all the way up to 50, 55 on the university. But in general, on the normal residential streets, we're in the 30-foot between curves to 20-foot between curves. So we'll probably have that 10-foot range. And again, the street width map, the street width map will explain that very well. If you pull it up on our website, or we have a few full-page handouts that we're happy to give you tonight. Who's first? Yes, sir.
Well, my position on it is I think we need to do a street-by-street assessment. We don't want our parked cars off the street and the driveway because what you're gonna end up doing is you're gonna block these sidewalks more than they are right now. And they're very hard to maneuver at this point. I think there's plenty of people that can park on both sides of the street or the other, but I think that would be a mistake also because I don't think you're gonna be able to keep the sidewalks clear for people to be able to use.
Put me right, right into the mic, when you...
That better? What I said was, I think we need to do a street-by-street assessment. Okay? And not force cars off the sidewalks.
And your name and address, if you would. Uh, everyone start with that, please.
Uh, that was this in 4150 Amber Street. And, uh, I also believe that, uh, corner houses should have a special dispensation anyway because the traffic is on short. Okay? And if you've got cars in your garage, and you have cars in your driveway, there's no way to get any of them out without even moving them. Uh, I do not want to see overnight parking. Uh, where, I think, I'll rephrase it. I don't want to see where you have to have cars off the street overnight. But I would agree to a permitting system if it's necessary. I think permitting would be acceptable to keep people off the street and help them live long enough in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is a very good point. This is a directional mic. So you want to hold it right up to your mouth, and you want to hold it horizontally. If you hold it this way and hold it down here, it doesn't catch all of your voice. So you want to hold it horizontally, and you want to put it right next to your mouth. I think you were next.
Thank you.
Is that good? May I open it to 297 Robinburg? Uh, I guess the first question I would have, I would ask is, um, I think it would be good to understand what the problem is. I mean, we've, we've saw the pictures, but it would be good, like, have there been cases when fire trucks could not get to a destination? Other cases when garbage trucks cannot make the route? It's possible that happens, but we have not heard that. Uh, in general, my comment would be that, to the extent possible, to keep parking legal and allowed on the street is generally the right thing to do. It reduces traffic speeds. Certainly, on our street, it's pretty narrow. And I can tell you, when cars are parked there, people really slow down, which when you have small kids helps out and keeps, uh, also cars away, away from blocking sidewalks. But on a case-by-case basis, I agree with the gentleman right before. You need to really look on a street-by-street basis. Where does it actually cause problems? And, and what do you need to do on specific streets? I would also comment that in narrower streets, parking is already a little lethal. There's a few streets where you can't park.
Did you give us your name and address to start?
Yes.
Thank you.
Who's next? Go ahead. I'll get you next.
Larry Kelly, 3319 Georgetown. I served my two and a half years on, uh, planning, so it's only been planning, so I'm familiar with this problem. One, the picture on Georgetown Center, I've enlightened you. Uh, it showed, it seemed to show room for a fire truck to get down the street. Uh, but I submitted some weeks ago a picture that's typical of my street. Uh, we had, uh, some people cutting the grass with their trailer, and they had parked it really good job. They parked right on the curb. And, uh, there was a little, uh, small foreign car parked across the street from them, and they did not do a good job. And they were about a foot or foot and a half out from the curb. There was less than, there was exactly eight feet between the two vehicles. And I talked to the fire chief about that, and you can stand on the shot. And he said, they do have more around several times a year because they can't get through the street. He said, fortunately, those are always been, they have been false alarms. Uh, but probabilities, we're dealing with probabilities. This is not a popularity contest, it's not a matter of convenience. This is probabilities. Uh, my brother, uh, worked on the open fire department, and he says, one minute is the difference between life and, uh, one minute. So, we, it hasn't happened, it hasn't happened. But the probabilities are that he can. Finally, one more thing, it's on here, it's on the... Old people, an old person. My vision is less than it was when I was young. I can't see as well at night. I hate to admit this, but my reflexes are probably slower than they were 20 years ago. And so, not seeing or having the reflex for a child or animal that should guard out from these parked cars could cost me and the person in my path, or the animal in my path. That's it.
Do you, do you support one type of thing or another?
Well, I, I think probably the most, uh, so far, to me, the most logical solution would be to not have any parking at night on the streets. It's a matter of convenience. People park in front because their driveways are narrow, are, in number of reasons. And so, it's convenience. So if they have to get out in the evening and move their car, they'll probably just move in and park their car in the driveway from the get-go. So it's just one idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Ken, I need a back, please.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Karkowski, and I'm at 6448 Buffalo Speedway. We are on the west side of Buffalo, at the corner of Pittsburgh and Buffalo. And we talk about what the problem is. It is safety, driving. When cars are parked on both of our sides of our street, when people are turning from Buffalo either way onto Pittsburgh, there have been major potential accidents there. Cars are driving towards, in this, in the same lane. So, a two-way street, we, we normally have, this is not a problem that's just during the evening. This is all day long. So, um, and it's not in a study, but this is safety. And my children have run out into the street. They can't be seen when we're turning down, when cars are turning from Buffalo onto Pittsburgh. We usually have three or four cars on both sides of Pittsburgh parked, from visitors of our neighbors as well as construction workers, that kind of thing. So, a two-way street, when you've got cars going, supposedly enough room to go two ways. When you're coming off, off Buffalo onto Pittsburgh, you're, you're, you're right in front of each other. And I've seen a lot of potential accidents, and my children are at danger. So I would recommend, uh, a case-by-case basis. As I was walking over here, I saw Otten at Rice. You all have no parking from the corner, several feet in, I don't know, maybe 30, 40, 50.
Next to the car?
Right over here.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Nick Rowe, 2719 Talbot. I'd like to just talk about a few things. I just pulled out some, um, literature about safety and preventing child pedestrian accidents. And I'd like to say this is the literature from the experts and not what one person believes because there's been, I know there's been some notion that if you allow parked cars, that slows cars down, that's safer for children. But this is what the experts say. In 2002, the experts, um, put together the, um, summary from multiple disciplinary powers where they came together for the first time. And the executive summary stated, and I quote, "Preschool age children, ages three to four years, and younger elementary school children, ages five to nine years, are most often struck as they enter the roadway in mid-block. Particularly if cars parked along the side of the road shielden from the view of drivers." Five percent of that is the Safe Kids USA, which is the nonprofit organization, whose mission is to help keep children safe, did a five-year study on that, or update. And their statement was, um, "Children are most likely to get hit by cars in areas with..." And these are the, um, factors. "In areas with high traffic volume, number one. Number two, a high number of parked cars on the streets, higher posted screen limits, the absence of a divided highway, few pedestrian-controlled buses, and a few alternate, alternative players such as parks." And then, um, have the, and this is just what you can, you can find, Texas A&M has this traffic safety. And they know, they have pictures showing, um, what cars are at the height of a, the eye level of a six-year-old kid. You can kind of see that in 1994, with cars, the kids just can't see, uh, beyond that, that's one of the problems. But they noted, "Most young children are struck near their homes in streets with drivers one day." Number one, wrap between parked cars. So I think what, just for us to, I mean, the evidence in the literature will say that parked cars adds to traffic to dangers. It doesn't, it doesn't add to safety of kids. Um, so I think that's the one thing that we need to, if there's evidence, by all means, just bring it up. But I think we should have real evidence to demonstrate. Secondly, on a case-by-case basis, other things. Closer to intersections, I think we need to have a lot longer distances allowing cars to park because there's a list of, noted, if you have cars parked on both sides of the street, it's very typical, but if, if one car, it's only 30 feet still, one, only one track at most can get between the stop sign and a parked car. If there's two cars waiting in line, like a light, and there's cars parked on both sides, people try to make a right turn onto that street, simply can't do it, they're, they're stuck. And that'll back up, and that'll keep the traffic on that street, um, backed up, which creates more havoc. So, um, just a few things, just one, please look at the evidence, what the experts say, what the literature say. And then, um, one thing is at intersections, even in corners, intersections, I think we need to have a lot longer, um, no parking zones.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Hassan Manassas. I'm a resident at 5808 Community Drive. And, you know, there's a lot of good proposals out here, so I don't want to spend time making proposals. I just would like to share a story. Um, that's about brings meter. A couple of weeks ago, I was backing up from my driveway, and there were two cars parked on each, each side of the... They're not just an obstruction of traffic, but they're also an obstruction of view. And that's the case with my story. I was with my grandmother, and we were backing up, we didn't see any car coming for me. I mean, honestly, I, it's not like we saw a car coming, and so we started speeding up before it came, like creeping out slowly. We didn't see a car coming. And there was two cars parked on each side. And by the time we reached a point where you just can't, you can't see anything, like, at all, like, nothing. This other car comes and hits us from the back. It is, it's a two-way traffic, so the car is coming like this, and there's a car parked here. So what it has to do is has to go around this car, and this is where I'm coming, I'm coming from here. And it just... And it just swoops right around, hits us in the back. And thank God it wasn't like fatal for anything, but I mean, damage was done. I mean, we were, we had to pay the ticket, we got, I mean, we had to go to court, you know? I'm the criminal, you know? And this doesn't make sense, you know, it doesn't make sense when there's an obstruction of view. You know, that's a problem for safety. Not just the one coming out of the driveway, but the person making the charge.
So what do you support, what would you?
I actually, whatever she just made up there has to say. She said, I mean, everybody has great views, but I was thinking to this nice lady, she will be more than happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Fields, I live at 2807 Plum, close to the corner of Wake Forest. And a couple of observations. One, people own more vehicles than they did in the past. So we have a lot more vehicles to deal with. Many of the homes have very narrow driveways. I refer to mine as the chute. And so further parking restrictions are going to cause the cars that are out there to have to spread out even further. And it'll just, it'll solve some problems, but it will also cause more problems and heartburn for owner and neighbors that now have my car parking in front of them instead of my house. The other comment I'd make is the probability of what the fire happening is very, very low. It's not zero, but it is low. So I think we have to take into account the risk or the probability of a fire occurring and not being able to get a fire truck down. And I obviously realize some streets are worse than others. So I do support a case-by-case addressing the issue. And I also agree with that gentleman about more distance from the stop sign further back. I'm close to the corner of Wake Forest and Plum, and there are people that constantly park, but it's just beyond the 30-foot restrictions. But it's still very dangerous and always a concern when I'm going through that intersection. So I support that second idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Ramper, I live at 2910, 2910 Sunset Boulevard. We're talking about probabilities and that sort of thing. I get to play Russian roulette about four times a day because I'm backing out on Sunset between two cars that block my driveway either side. And my solution would be to permit, because everybody that parks on the street, not everybody, but people who have to, should get a permit, like we don't have the space. But most everybody's parked because they just don't want to park at a driveway. It's not too easy to jump in your car and zoom all the way to back out, especially on Sunset. But in my case, I do have to live with the hazard all the time. At least every time I go in and out of my driveway. And I do agree with the government. We should not have visibility issues. And then one other thing. You're concerned about the triangle visibility for plants. You should be concerned about cars, because we can't see through those either.
Thank you.
Well, I would support no parking on the street at any time. My name is Sally Leonard, and I live at 3022 Tangley. Now admittedly, Tangley is one of the more narrow streets. I have had a gentleman ring my doorbell to see if I was interested in selling my car. He thought it was my car because it was parked in front of my house. It was not, I mean, it was not my car. But it was my next-door neighbor who had parked in front of our house for a period of three to four years. My daughter lives on Gerard. She has a neighbor who parks three cars in front of her house. So almost 24/7, there are cars in front of her house that don't belong to her. And this, you know, I know aesthetics really doesn't trump safety, but it is aesthetically displeasing. I've had friends who are railtors say that they have had clients come in on all the parking because that's not pleasing. But more importantly, have a fire truck and an ambulance ring my doorbell because they can't get through. And they had, I don't know who the cars belonged to, and so they had to back down Tangley onto Buffalo Speedway, where between Buffalo and Belmont. And I don't understand why people can't always park in their driveways and their garages. And yes, it's inconvenient, but I don't think inconvenience. I don't think inconvenience should trump safety. And most importantly is the safety of our children. After all, this is a family neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do people could say why they're in their driveway? If they can, they should give them the voice to say why they can. What is people from, what is people in their driveway?
Hi, my name is Anne Clay, I live at 4224 Byron Street. And I support a case-by-case limit on parking. I'm a big believer that if you can park your car in the driveway, and you have a garage, you should be parking in your garage. I've got three cars. We park all three cars in the garage and the driveway. And it requires some juggling between the drivers and the cars. And we do that out of respect for our neighbors, so that we're not parking in front of their house. We've got a neighbor who's got seven, eight cars that park in front of our house all the time. Park in front of my neighbor's house all the time. I've got an empty lot across the street, that's their parking lot. It's right there where I drive back out of my driveway. As a result, I even hit one of them one time back out of my driveway because it was such a low-riding trailer that they had attached to one of their trucks, that I didn't see it coming out of the back of my driveway. Literally have been parked into my house and had to drive out through the yard and through my neighbor's yard because I can't get out of my driveway. The other issue I have is community. There are houses on community that face the street, and there are houses that don't face the street. I believe that if your house doesn't face the street, you ought not be parking on that side of the road. Nobody ought to be parking on that side of the road. There literally, you will be turning from the west, coming down this net, taking a right onto community, going south. And you make that turn, there are cars flying over the railroad track behind you, and you literally cannot go anywhere because the cars are all backed up because we're trying to puzzle piece our way through the parked cars because there's not enough room for a two-way traffic there. And if there's an accident, you can't tell who's at fault because the road, you know, only one side of the road is open, and each end different point.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ray Shutter, I live on 6637 Buffalo Speedway. I live on Buffalo Speedway. Guess what? There's not one car parked on Buffalo Speedway. And people can park in their driveways. My wife and I, we walk three, four miles every morning. We walk by houses, it's obvious. One car in the driveway, and then a couple up out front. It's mom is in the driveway, dad's on the street, and the kid is out on the street. They just are too cut and pick and lazy to put their car where they should. They're too lazy, if you will, to swap cars around because dad has to have his car, and mom's got to have her car. Also, when you look at these places, generally speaking, there's a two-door storage shed on the side of the building. It's called a garage. And you can't get a car in there because people are just too lazy to let it out. Use the garages, use the driveways, by the way. No parking on Buffalo Speedway, and no parking in South Side Place at night. And it works. We can do the same thing in most places. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Peely, I live at 2714 Talbot Street. Talbot is probably one of the narrower streets. I'm anxious to see how narrow it is. I'm very much in favor of you please analyzing our streets on a street-by-street basis. Our street happens to be a two-blocks street that is far too narrow to have any cars parked. I'm an anesthesiologist, I've been an anesthesiologist for just shy of 40 years. I will tell you that minutes count when it comes to emergency response. Three weeks ago, I had, I tried to drive down our street. Someone was having a party, and someone who parked prohibited me from getting down my street. I had to back out of the street, not a great maneuver. Go around the street, pull back in. I called the police and said we have a problem. They came, they issued a citation, they put a ticket on the car. I don't think there should be any parking on a street as narrow as Talbot. Nick, who spoke earlier, has small children. There are many small, small children on the street. I think it's a safety hazard. And I think for certain select streets that are far too narrow in Westview, there should be absolutely no parking at all at any time.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny Powers. I live at 2714 Robin Hood. Been in Westview since 91, and my home address is Houston, Harris County. I think my main concern should be the safety of the residents. The, we touched that, and a case-by-case study of the streets makes us two. I don't have hard data, but I would say probably two or, two to three times a quarter, a guard truck has not been able to make it down our street because of cars parked on both sides of the street. Obviously, in an emergency, whether it be a fire, which is low probability, but injury or need for DMT is not that improbable for anyone. So I think main focus is safety, whatever it takes to have safety. My wife talked to him three or four years ago. One way to do it, one way, the simplest, is to five days park on the outside of the street, and the day following, you have a side street, and the street is open. I don't know that that's a solution. We're not looking for solutions tonight. But certainly there's got to be one that's acceptable and fair for people who live on very narrow streets and have more cars and have space. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, by the way, you had to hand up a lot after this, my gentleman here.
Sir Powell Edwards, 3751 Rice Boulevard. I've been a resident for 38 years plus. We've had these discussions about Rice Boulevard off and on since, it's our first move again. I'm in favor of a case-by-case, road-by-road solution. I'm with you, the example of why I think we should have parking on the street. When my son was going to Rice, we had three cars. I was in all the way, and then my son came in at some unknown hour in the middle of the night. He always parked closest to the street. There have been times when we have not been able to get the cars out and park them on the streets so you can jock them around. So what you end up having to do, and I have done this in the past, is you park one car in one person's driveway, another car in another driveway. You park in the third driveway, the car you want to take, and then you have to bring the other cars back. So just saying no parking on the street is really a pain. I mean, it's unbelievable pain. I think on a case-by-case solution, we can work out some of the streets. One of the things I admired in Wentworth, Virginia, they have a line-stable road. You can't have a white car. A white car, and they've marked off for narrow cars. I think the line solution in Wentworth has solved a lot of their problems. I think it would help in some of the deals where you have enough room for a fire truck and a guard truck to get by if you only have a car and trucks on the other side of the yard.
Thank you. Thank you.
Frank Matthews from 3938 Coldridge. Couple of general comments. One, identify the problem before you start trying to figure out solutions. Parking is not a solution for a all-problems, solution for some problems. Second, consider the locality. Consider what you're looking at. People are complaining about folks parking in front of their house. And they tell me they want to park in front of their house. Because they want more than 30 feet from the stop sign. If you have more than 30 feet from the stop sign, I have no parking in front of my house. On the sign, in the front, nothing. They talk about safety. You want safety, drive back and out on the west lane. You know, that's one reason I park in the front fairly often. I know this is taking my life in my hands to try and get out of there at the time I have to leave in the morning. You know, those car streets, houses along the west lane with short drives, high traffic loads, they're a real headache. But that's the way the city was built. If you want to rebuild the city, rebuild the city. But you've got to start with what you had 70 years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom Peely, 4208 Ruskin. And I'm kind of shocked, comrades, at the attitude of some people in the meeting that want our government to somehow legislate the use of our driveways and our garages. I mean, it's an unbelievable position of government power. I have not heard anything from the fire chief or the police department or anything about this whole safety issue. If there is a huge safety issue, why aren't they up in arms demanding action? Cars have existed for decades in Westview. This is not a zoo issue. The other thing I want to say is beware of unintended consequences. If you decide to ban parking on certain streets, those cars are not going to go away. They are going to go to other streets and cause more problems. The other issue I've heard people say is that's make it one side of the street only. Again, what's going to happen to those cars? You'll have the same number of cars on half the space. Do you want to come home from work and have to circle the block looking for parking spaces when there's a spot across from your house? Do you want to be frustrated every time you want to move your car that you can't find a parking space in front of your house? And how are you going to manage this? On a weekly basis, monthly? So what, at the scope of midnight, we all run out there and move our cars to the other side of the street? While having lots of cars on the street can be irritating, we live in a car-centric urban environment. There is no parking problem that requires an all-encompassing government fix. If the police department were to enforce existing laws regarding cars parking on sidewalks and cars blocking the box and parking in front of stop signs, a lot of this parking problem would go away. So I just ask the council to ask the police department to do their job.
I'm Walter Peterson. We have a...
Address, please, I'm sorry, address.
4115 South Street. We have single driveway. And that's, you know, reparking in that area. I have been parking on the street because every time I get behind her, I have to come out, or she has to come out, move in with the car. But this popping out of the car over there against the street is not a wonderful thing. But then we do have, I've noticed, cars from workers, trucks, large trailers, caregivers, delivery vans, and all kinds of stuff out there. And it's a lot of it. The other thing is that we think others need car, I mean, parking. You know, have visitors with more cars, and have students, cars, house guests. Okay, and having no parking sign would be an hassle. I hate to see those, no parking signs all across the streets. I need no park, you know, curves, hard to see. And then parking between sidewalks and house setbacks, most of them have one park in that area. But I notice if you do have to have three units there, what you're going to do is take them down from the street and put in two, to that setback line. So, they just add a park to it.
So, what do you support?
Well, I support, just, I do support parking on the street.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Wallace Hamilton, 3902 Amherst. I'll say, first of all, I don't intend to make the decision that the council asked me. There is obviously no easy solution here. There's a serious problem with parking. With that said, I think what the council needs to do is ask itself, what's the least restrictive measure it would give a place? I'm not entirely sure what it is. It might be requiring curwe parking or doing things on a case-by-case basis. What I do know, through moral certainty, if you're requiring people to park in their garage or park in the driveway, is not a solution for a substantial percentage of the populace. When you drive through Westview, you'll see most of the houses are two-color, have a two-car garage and a substantial number of residents have three people in the house who are driving. And if you require those people to either park in the garage, park in the driveway or do a combination of it, you're basically requiring people to come up with logistical plans almost unworkable. And from my perspective, I would say with our logistical needs, it would probably force us to move out of Westview. And I like this, but again, I don't want to do it. So, I think we need to look for a less restrictive approach to dealing with parking.
Thank you.
Lee Williams, 3748 Rice Boulevard. There's clearly an issue based on pictures that we've seen from some of the narrower streets with restricted parking. I live six houses down near Rice Boulevard. It's probably one of the widest streets and I want to comment on Sir Powell's statements. Unfortunately, we have four cars with teenagers and such. And it is a challenge on mornings to back four cars out on the busy Rice Boulevard going to school in the morning. So, for those of you who stated that, you know, don't be lazy, park everything in the driveway, I challenge you to come back down Rice Boulevard at 7:45 on a school day and juggle four cars. We have to park a car on the street just because we have four cars. We have to deal with the blocking our view. We've done that successfully for 15 years. And if it wasn't for my neighbor who parked his car out there too, Rice Boulevard would be a raceway because of the speed of all of the vehicles traveling up and down Rice Boulevard when there's not obstructive flow. Both vehicles, two vehicles parked on either side does break the traffic and slow the traffic down. And I offer my driveway to the chief of police to run radar for my driveway. He can park his car in my driveway and run radar on Rice Boulevard and probably solve any money problems this, this community has with the number of tickets that they were writing. So, in closing, I support it on a case-by-case basis. You have a tough decision, it could come down to you take votes from each individual block in the democratic way. Whoever votes the most on one way or a solution, that's the way you go. But for Rice Boulevard, I don't think there is a mobility issue because clearly, fire engines go down our street all night long at very high speed. We hear them every night. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Walter Crone to 3777 Plum Street. You know, it's almost kind of how do you legislate courtesy? And frankly, this is kind of an eye-opening experience to cause. We probably all have our things that we realize we need to do better, comply. We have a relationship with our neighbors where we park in front of their house to block our driveway, they park in front of our house to block their driveway. The idea being that if anyone's going to hit somebody, backing up, it'll be our own vehicles, type of things. But it's, for this, it's an example of a lot of this, how do you legislate courtesy? We talk about the example of the very law-abiding lawn service contractor and the very non-law-abiding small car owner. You know, some of this is courtesy issues and I am a case-by-case since I moved here in 98 and since I moved in Corbin to Westview and noticed I had a visit on Purdue and 3700 block back in 86. And I hear the no parking and this is kind of made more of a question. I can't envision no street parking with three adult children, two married, grandparent, in-laws out of town. And so, when I hear no street parking, I understand the idea of the driveways and the garages, I really do. But then I think, and I'm not trying to be facetious, but what do we do about guests? Easter lunch, passover, saviors, children's birthday parties? I really need a little bit of clarification because when I hear no street parking, I go, well, I goes that. And I may be dead wrong, but that's what I hear with no parking and I know I'm not the only one that needs a little bit of clarification on what is no street parking mean? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Turpini. I live at 3117 Casey Street. And I'm not sure whether case-by-case basis or parking permit would be best in my opinion, but I think if we're, if we do the parking permits for cars, one way that the permits could be allocated is based on, if you have a one-car garage, then you get a permit for each car you have over the number of slots in your garage. Or a two-car garage, you can get permits for the third and fourth car, you know, et cetera. And, you know, have it be a monetary value that's enough that pays people actually what to think about whether they want to park their car on the street or park in their driveway. And then, by all means, not allow permits for residents who own commercial vehicles. We have, in our block, we have a commercial vehicle that parks on the street every single night inside of a small U-haul and parks directly behind our driveway and it creates all kinds of problems allowing us to even get out. And we've had issues of cars not being able to go down. And so, as far as parking on the street, I would propose that we stagger, stagger the cars so that two cars can't be parked directly across each other on the street. They can be staggered and therefore that would maybe help some of the emergency vehicles get through because we've had numerous times, I've had them during the day quite often and there's numerous times where an garbage truck or recycling truck or whatnot lays on this horn until someone comes out of their house and moves a car. I never have a car on the street, so I can't solve the problem that the horn stays on and it has literally stayed on for four minutes until someone comes out. And sometimes it's a law man that needs to come out and leave or whatnot. It does happen that cars cannot get down the street and especially hard if there's a commercial vehicle that a resident parks on the street on a regular basis. So, because no commercial vehicles be allowed to park overnight, I understand contractors or people like that need to park during the day, but no commercial vehicles be allowed to park overnight and residents cannot park their own commercial vehicles that they use for business on the street. And then I would also agree with enforcing the distance that you can park from the corner. So, just having the police really take action on that.
Thank you.
My name is Tammy Jack Allen. I'm 3741 Nottingham. Where do we live? Think about it. We live in a city and a city. And hey, can anyone, does anyone survive here without a car? I mean, come on. Now, I had my father living with me in my house until two months ago, he just passed away. And my brother would come over. I have, I'm fortunate, I have three sisters. And I had people come in and go out. It was like a train station at my house. And I had a full-time nurse. My father needed medical assistance. So, you're talking about, you know, six cars. I mean, we have two cars, I mean, my husband and I. You know what? My son's about to start driving. So, in that one little house, there is no way that we could survive rules and, you know, the nurses that were coming, oh, you have to go get your parking permit. It's totally not feasible, unrealistic. And most people, when you, when I'm sitting in the back and I'm listening to people, I realize that most people, this is a disgruntled issue with a neighbor. My neighbor's parking in front of my car, like the lady who lives on Sunset, if you can't drive, you can't park out, you need to go discuss that issue with your neighbors. You have a neighbor issue, you don't have a parking issue. I'm sorry. Okay, you didn't legislate for the people to drive, but you know what? You know, at the end of the day...
Focus, focus up here.
I don't think I'm in the battery. I'm not trying to be serious. The other problem is, is that you, what happens? You start legislating this and someone's going to give me a ticket and who gets the money is going to the general fund and my neighbor's going to call the police on me? You know, for example, I have a car, let me just give you one more example. I have two, three neighbors across from me, they're all doctors, okay? And they come and go at all hours of the night. And even sometimes a poor guy across the street comes home, he's exhausted, he's left his lights on and having to get up and, you know, your light's on, you have your lights on the car. But he doesn't. There's four people in his car in his household driving, both of them. So, they all park at least one or two cars in front on their, in front of their houses. There is inconceivable for him. If he drives his car, parks in the garage and the next kid come and the next and the wife, he's got to get to the hospital. How, what's he going to do? Say, I'll be right here after I move out the three cars? You know, I mean, let's...
Thank you.
I'm Donna Field. I live at 3132 Nottingham and my house sits to Buffalo Speedway. So, before I address my unique issues, which I realize are my problem, there are several things that I need clarification on. Why is, I'm soft-spoken, I apologize for that. Can you hear me? Okay. Why is this a night parking issue? I would think there would be less traffic, fewer children playing in the street hopefully at night, shouldn't be pets on the street. Why is this a night parking issue?
We're not saying there's any issues. We're just listening to the dog.
I'm curious about that because to me, if there would be any time of the day, it would be during the day when kids are outside. But I, I'm not in favor of it unless there is a street that is so narrow that an emergency vehicle cannot get down that street. My street has cars on both sides and emergency vehicles can get down that street. Somebody else called in, what do you do if you have guests? Do you say park HEB? I'm confused. I mean, I really, I have kids that live out of town. I told them not to come anymore, so I don't know what to do with them. It's, it's an issue. I think it would be great if we could just pass a law that all teenagers are not allowed to drive. And then, that would take care of a whole lot of problems. My particular issue, I live one block from Sunset, so that traffic line packs cars up past my driveway, past my street, and I can't even get out in the morning. If I were to park in my driveway, I would be eyeliner over the sidewalk and probably wade through two or three lights to get out. As it is now, I have to park 30 feet back from the stop sign, which means I can't even park my car in front of the sidewalk that leads to my front door. And yet, I'm on a big wide street that has room and I agree with whoever it was that said, oh, please let's become a community that communicates. We're good people here. Talk to the neighbors. I'm having a party tonight, do you mind? You know, be polite, be respectful.
Thank you.
This has been a good evening. Thank you all very much for your comments. Those of you that didn't get to talk tonight, you could do two things. You could come 3 o'clock or 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock on Thursday, or you could come up and tell Mike or Delma what your issue is and we'll put it on the list. These lists are going on the website.
Yes, sir. We also have the comment cards and the email address, streetparking@westviewtx.gov. So, any of you that didn't get to speak that have something you want to share, please go to those and send them to us.
Now, we will compile everything of all three meetings. We're going to get the guidance of traffic experts and we will be discussing this at future city council bookshops and you are all invited to those when we have. We'll be announcing that hopefully as heavily as we've announced these. Thank you for coming tonight.